Hi there and welcome to canceling COVID. I'm Tanya Rievens and we're going to start off by talking or assuring you that we discuss a real talk, real conversation about what's happening in our community and you will find a lot of information out. We're having conversations that aren't typically held on other platforms and we've been able to bring a lot of experts together, community leaders, and just hold candid conversations about, most importantly, how COVID is impacting our lives day in and day out. One of the things we also do is our question of the day. Let's start with that. Once you're fully vaccinated, will you feel comfortable without wearing your mask? The CDC now says it's okay for vaccinated grandparents to visit healthy children and grandchildren. And we know that our elders have really suffered, whether it's through the nursing homes or visiting their children and grandchildren. And certainly we've suffered not seeing them as well. So are you comfortable? The CDC says that grandparents can now do their visits without their mask. It's also supposedly safe for fully vaccinated people to leave their mask at home when they're around other fully vaccinated people. That means take them off, no more masking up. Are you buying into that? Do you think it's safe? Well, that's what we are talking about again today. Are you comfortable? And do you feel safe as far as taking your mask off once you've been fully vaccinated? It's interesting, you know, where we've come within a year's time. So again, the question of the day, we'd love for you to weigh in as you hop online. I'd love to hear your input, your feedback. We're sharing on the screen as well. But are you comfortable? The CDC is saying now you can get rid of the mask if you're fully vaccinated. And of course, we know they've been in two parts as far as the vaccination and now one's been offered as just one. And I've seen a lot more people say, hey, I can take that one shot. The two, a bit too much. What we're doing now again is real talk about real problems about the COVID-19 epidemic pandemic and what it continues to create in our everyday lives. Come on, folks. It's a plague is what it is. And today, the big headline, new daily COVID cases under 1,000 in North Carolina for the first time in over five months. That's pretty amazing. I know a lot of people didn't think we got to this point, didn't know when we would get to this point. And some people didn't make it, the harsh truth and reality of it. The state has reported 997 new COVID-19 cases. This was reported on Tuesday. And get this, it's the fewest in a day in the first time, and the number has been under 1,000 since September 29th of last year. The first time since September 29th. And while those numbers seem to be improving, there are still a lot of other concerns from the pandemic and its impact on our community. That leads me to bring in someone that has been working so hard in the community. So honored to have him join us this afternoon, none other than County Commissioner Mark Jarrell, who is taking the time to speak with us. So first of all, Mark, for the people, thank you for taking the time to join us and talk with us.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me, Tanya. I appreciate you getting the word out to the community.
Absolutely. And you know, Mark has been pretty, Commissioner has been great doing this because I've been able to build relationships and connect with others. And we've even had conversations, some that are not being reported on mainstream media. So it's really been helpful to have this platform. And a lot of journalists around the country, African American have done just that, you know, realizing that there are so many ways to get the message out and bringing it to the people. So tell us what you have witnessed as Commissioner, the biggest impacts that COVID has had, you know, to life here in Mecklenburg County. And why are you doing that? I'm going to adjust my lighting from time to time, something goes out. So don't let me distract you as you go ahead and answer that question.
No, and thanks for leading with that question, Tanya, because you know, COVID has actually impacted all aspects of our lives. So whether you're talking about health, business, education, work, recreation, it's impacted every area, every aspect. And so in addition, when you think about the impact of the deaths that we've experienced right here in Mecklenburg County and statewide hospitalizations, you know, people forget that, you know, a lot of folks were very, very close to death and not doing very well. And we had high rates of hospitalizations, the fear of the unknown. And so it's really taken its toll mentally as well as physically. And I think the mental stress, Tanya, has been really significant and something that we're really going to have to address long into the future. Because people have been struggling. What happens if I get it? What about a family member? How do I take care of my family income? So those things are really weighing down on so many people and the residents in Mecklenburg County. And those are the things that I'm thinking about that keep me up at night.
And it's important that you mention that because I feel like oftentimes, people are so busy trying to focus on the economy and trying to get everything back to somewhat of a new norm that they do forget about the individual people. I was just watching as this conversation evolves around getting funding and this $1.9 trillion bill that has been passed. And the question was asked, how many of those individuals has actually sat down with just everyday people and to see how their lives are being impacted and what's going on? So how do you see Mecklenburg County moving forward from this point concerning COVID?
Well, you know, another great question, and it's something that we have to grapple with as a community. I'll tell you this, you know, the pandemic was able to really shine a glaring light into so many of the areas that people in our community have been fighting against for years, if not for generations, frankly. You know, you have been highlighting these things throughout your career. And so particularly when we talk about disparities, and as it relates to wealth inequality and just the overall inequity in the community. And so to really answer your question, I think we have to understand that the disparate outcomes that we see as it relates to health and even economic factors, we've got to rethink what equity means in our community, Tanya. And not only rethink what equity means, but how do we apply it? And I think that's very, very important. And we are going to have to lead within a lens of equity and really think about this application of equity so that we can level the playing field for a lot of people in our community.
And the whole issue of equity, it's not going away. I'm glad you even brought that up because it's not just Mecklenburg County, all across the country. This is a conversation that's being held. It's kind of been suppressed for way too long and is pretty much, maybe we can say COVID has created some type of silver lining in that this conversation has been forced to be held. So we've heard before, and you brought up racial and ethnic disparities that COVID is creating. Can you kind of expand or speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, but I do want to go back to something you just said. It's only a silver lining if we do something about it. One of my biggest fears, Tanya, is that, you know, we're going to have this conversation now, and it's front and center, and it's sexy to have the conversation, and everybody knows the right words to say. But what happens when we get through the pandemic? Does everybody forget this? Do we stop having these tough conversations? And frankly, I don't think we've actually had the tough conversation yet. But you know, we've got to continue to keep it front and center. I'll tell you, when you think about what, as it relates to the disparities that I'm always discussing with the outcomes that people of color are seeing, it was played out in the testing. We were certainly being infected at much higher rates and not being tested at the proper rates. We didn't have the right level of outreach into communities of color to educate, dispel myths. And then it played out when you saw the rates of death, particularly in the African American community, were just exorbitantly high relative to our percentage of the population. When you look at the vaccinations, you know, we are not being vaccinated at a rate that really is going to protect our community. And so again, these disparities continue to play out in so many different aspects.
And in other words, the audio is good, but it has to match the video at some point. And so I'm glad that you made that point. You're absolutely right. So you've had, you know, some COVID-related town hall meetings a few weeks back. You had one. What was the primary focus and what were the key takeaways?
So the primary focus was to provide information. It's to educate. If we don't, we have to start everything with education, in my opinion, Tanya. And so it was really to educate and also dispel myths. One of the things that, you know, we can't have right now, particularly during a pandemic and the devastating outcomes that come, you can't have a bunch of misinformation and myths out there. And so it's my responsibility as a county commissioner to make sure that I am leveraging the experts, but also allowing a space for people to ask questions in a safe space, to feel more comfortable to move forward so that we can get through this and so people can get through it unscathed. And some of the things that came out, some of the takeaways were essentially, you know, people felt more comfortable after they heard from, you know, our experts in public health and our partners from Novant and Atrium. And really, when they had that safe space to ask the questions and to talk about the things that they've heard. And, you know, people are really concerned about how can, how can we be using a vaccine that was produced so quickly? You know, every, any other time, it takes years and years. And so I, you know, and I thought these were great questions, but we led with education.
And that is the key that we figured out here as well, not taking a stance one way or another, just providing the information to educate our community and then allow them to make the decision. And that's a piece, Commissioner, you're right, that has been missing from the past when we have this conversation. A question of the day, we've asking people, you know, once they're vaccinated, vaccinated, do they feel comfortable taking their mask off? And Elaine Berry has hopped on. She goes, no, she's going to continue to wear her mask in public. And I would say some people would rather be safe and cautious because this is all somewhat new territory as we continue to learn and figure out every day. I understand, you know, that another variant, you know, that's how viruses work. So people, I would say, wouldn't go wrong. And I can agree if they feel more comfortable just wearing their mask even after getting vaccinated. Now here, speaking of vaccines, we've had about 1 million vaccinated across the state. And you already spoke about fewer minorities who have gotten the shot. And you've expressed concern even about our disabled and our homebound residents. What's the county's vaccine outreach plan? Or can you talk a little bit about how, when it comes to equity that the county is looking to reach these, I guess, undeserved or challenged communities?
Yeah, so another great question. And I will tell you, and I'll tell your audience, Tanya, that one of the challenges that we have, and if we can just speak plainly, one of the main challenges that you find is that the systems and institutions and structures that are in place are in place in, they're in place to produce the outcomes that we see. So without us really going into trying to change the system, dramatically change the system and challenge the structure and the institutions, you know, we're going to continue to have these outcomes. And I always say that to say that, yes, the county, we have a plan that was just delivered a couple of weeks ago where we're going to start with education. It's going to be a massive media campaign, which is great. We're going to leverage a faith community, which we have to do, and other partners in the media, and also community influencers, Tanya. But the problems that we have is that, you know, my biggest concern is reaching people that don't access social media or these normal, and even, you know, offbeat media outlets. How do we reach them? Are we thinking outside the box? Or are we trying to do the same things that we've done in the past with different outcomes? How do we reach our refugee and immigrant communities that we know don't tune into these places? Our homebound, to your point, our homebound elderly and our disabled? Are we providing platforms for these individuals that say, that don't say, go to this website or drive to this location? So we've got to continue to challenge our thought process, challenge the system so that we do have different outcomes. But I would say, you know, frankly, the, right now, I'm not so sold on the fact that we're doing the best job in that. And we really need to rethink how we're delivering services to people that need it.
That's great to see. But a shameless plug, Commissioner, we've got Facebook on social and regular radio on street. So hopefully we'll be included in a part of that campaign. I'd want to go ahead and talk.
You should be.
I appreciate that. But now let's talk about the states. I know you've heard that a lot of those states are starting to ease some of their COVID safety rules, like lifting that mask mandate. What are your thoughts on that? Do you think Mecklenburg County, obviously, the governor is the one that would make the decision for the state. But I even in Texas, I see where individuals are saying, that's okay, that's what the governor is saying, but this is how we're going to operate. Have you all had any conversation around this?
Not necessarily around that. I think, you know, as a commissioner, I can just tell you that I don't believe that the data is telling us that we should lift a mask mandate and that we should just completely open up and people just freewheeling. I think we do have to be, you know, it's a delicate balancing act because again, we're in an economic crisis as well. Businesses have been devastated. And I think that we can open up, but we can do it responsibly. I don't think that, I think we should still practice the three Ws, right? I think we should still wear our masks. I think we should still wash our hands. We should still wait six feet. We should avoid large gatherings. But I do think it is a mistake, particularly when you look at the data. We also know that there are some variants that are out there that are much more powerful than the initial strain. And, you know, would be, the numbers are trending in the right direction now, but it would be such a devastating impact to us emotionally and physically if we wind up taking two or three steps back.
Oh, that's such a great point. And I wish people would just please heed to that advice. I mean, we're making progress, but this is all baby steps for me. And you're right, the mental impact and the physical, if we can get through this and get out of the woods completely versus easing up and then kind of going backwards, so to speak, taking steps in the wrong direction. So hopefully you're comfortable with me asking you our question of the day. If you've been fully vaccinated or when you get fully vaccinated, would you feel comfortable going without your mask?
I would not. I'm going to be wearing my mask for quite some time, Tanya, because the thing that we have to remember, it's not necessarily about us as individuals, but we've got to remember the broader community. We have to look at the vaccination rates there. And I guess I would feel more comfortable as we get a little bit closer to herd immunity. But right now, I'm going to have my family and myself, we're going to wear our masks for quite some time, whether we're in Mecklenburg County or we go to another state that does not require masks. And I'm also going to tread lightly in frequenting establishments that are not requiring masks. I think that is a recipe for disaster. And I'm going to let the data lead and just be cautious.
Commissioner Jarrell, anything else that you would like to share as we start to wrap things up? Mark for the people, and I'm just envisioning you with your bow tie and a matching mask. I don't think I've seen you in that, but who knows, always dressing nicely. So anything else you'd like to share as we close things out?
Absolutely. One, I want to say thank you for having me. I want to say thank you for offering this platform to the people. It's just so important, Tanya. You've been doing it for so long, you're so respected, and people really listen to your voice. So I just want to say thank you for that. The other thing that I want to say really quickly is that the toll that this has taken on black people and people of color is something that has been devastating. Forty percent of black businesses will not come back. And, you know, we, the disparate outcomes we've seen as far as the health outcomes. And then also, when you look at the mental toll and mental health, is something that we have to focus on. I'm very, very concerned about our mental health as a community and what it looks like as we go through this pandemic. And then long term, I'm having a community conversation tomorrow to really address the mental health and allow people a space to really navigate this and get some tips and tricks and access to resources and learn about how they can access resources. So I encourage your audience to please tune in. You can go to my Facebook page at Mark, the number four, the people. And you can register and just encourage you to join us. But think about the mental health as well, relative to the physical health. And just thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate those kind words. It's always a pleasure. But what time tomorrow? Because that's a great point. We've had mental health experts on here as well. That is one of the agendas that we definitely need to focus more on. So what time tomorrow for the community conversation?
Starts at, it's going to be 6:30 PM to 8. It's via Zoom. And we'll have our partners from Atrium, Novant, and Social Services as well, to be a part of that discussion.
Oh, good, good stuff. Again, thank you so much for taking the time to talk with us. And thank you for serving the people. We certainly appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Take care.
You too. Commissioner Jarrell, guys, he's been working really hard in the community and always working hard. I'll tell you who's working hard here in the studio. I can't get this light to stay on. I could never find help when I needed. And I don't know why it's coming out. And you know, I'm all in your face now. Let's focus on some of the questions or responses to questions of the day. You know, I have to shout out Erica Simonton Beatty as well. She hops on on Sundays during the weekend. I'm so grateful for you, sis. I appreciate it. And your response to the question of the day, you say you think after being fully vaccinated, you might not feel as exposed if you didn't have a mask on. So it sounds like you're saying that you're okay taking that mask off. Looks like Lee Stewart, my homie out of the Fayetteville area, she is a radio personality and a PD over there. She says, you can still get the virus after being vaccinated. I feel like the public is being misled on some levels. Look at Texas, anything pretty or anything pretty goes there now. And you're right, people, and we just talked about that, how people are taking it for granted. And, you know, we're making a little bit of progress, but that doesn't mean that we're there yet. So we really, really need to use caution as we ease our way out of this. Now, here in Charlotte, you know, we've got fewer and fewer people that are actually getting tested. And that's an interesting conversation because as more people get vaccinated, they're not getting tested. And we have already had this conversation. You know, it can be kind of difficult for experts to really pinpoint the direction of the virus and where it's heading, as well as with the issue of variants and how they will occur. This is happening and there's a big mask push to reopen. Looks like testing is getting pushed, you know, to the side burner, less people are getting tested, which is very concerning. And we've got Dr. Tricia Black. She's going to join us to talk more about that. You know, Dr. Black has dropped a lot of nuggets in with us, informing us about a lot of issues that are not being discussed on mainstream media. And Dr. Black, I'm grateful for you for that. As a matter of fact, I've been able to have a conversation like I really knew what I was talking about. Oh, I didn't know that. Or I didn't know that. And I'm like, you know what? You should be grateful, or you should be as fortunate to know someone like Dr. Black, like I have. For example, not testing before you get the vaccine. And I had that conversation with someone and they said, oh, my goodness, this was a pastor. He said, my neighbor just died for that very reason. He had COVID, he got the vaccine, and he died. And so the question is, why aren't we talking about this? And why aren't we challenging people that are doing these tests? You know, while we're out, in addition to that, you're the first person that really talked about regular testing that I can remember. I don't hear anybody talking about that. So I just wanted to give you your kudos as I bring you on and Dr. Tricia Black, everybody. But let's start with you, the question of the day. Once you are fully vaccinated, if you get vaccinated, will you feel comfortable taking your mask off?
Thank you, Tanya. And again, thank you for having me. And I absolutely will not feel comfortable taking my mask off. I think one of your listeners or viewers said that you can still catch COVID after you've been vaccinated. And that is what is not being promoted, that not only can you contract COVID, you can still spread COVID and give COVID, pass it along to someone who is not vaccinated. So it is about community safety and not about personal safety. So no, I will wear a mask and I will encourage everybody I know to wear a mask. When I go in restaurants or facilities that where employees are not masked, and I do see that, I don't know if you guys see that in the audience, but I turn around and I walk out the door.
Yeah, I haven't run into that yet. And I would certainly do the same. Now, we've been socially distancing or the physical distance now for over a year. We've got three vaccines on the market. COVID cases appearing to drop cabin fever. Yes, it is real. I can't wait to get out and about. And everybody feels the same way. And we saw a little bit of that just over the weekend. We're starting to see the numbers for even airline flights. They're starting to spike just a little bit. You know, what are your thoughts on the psychology of reopening around the country?
Well, I think, you know, as Commissioner Jarrell pointed out, COVID has taken a toll on our mental health and our mental well-being across this country and across this world. So psychologically, you know, if you remember in North Carolina, it was March 23rd where most of the orders went out for shelter in place. And so we are approaching that year. So psychologically, I believe that our legislators, our leaders believe that we got to do something. You know, we can't go into another year with this same level of restrictions. And so I think it is a political or psychological move to boost the morale, which is very much needed in this country. But it's also a safety mistake because, you know, we look at those numbers and we say, okay, the numbers for COVID, those who are positive is going down. But you already said the numbers of people being tested is going down. Typically during, over the last year, when we set up to test, on average, we test 50 to 150 people a day. We're down to about less than 10, three to five people some days who are being tested. So if the number of people who are testing has dropped 90%, then of course, it makes sense that the numbers of people testing positive is reduced. But it's not being reduced in the same percentages. It's a dangerous percentage because if we think, what if that that 90 to 100% return, that 150 to 200, just at our facility were to return, how many of those folks would be positive? I think we see that the numbers are actually going up. So I think the numbers are misleading.
And Ali Steward just commented, she said, there it is, do the math. And that is a great point. It is misleading. And we all know when the testing and cases going down, obviously, there's a correlation. There's a relationship. Ali Steward, she's one of the, an audience who also commented. Her friend has had COVID twice. She's not interested in getting the vaccine and neither is the friend who has had COVID twice. And one of the things we are encouraged by and what we do with this platform is provide education. I do want to weigh in, Jacqueline Hill. She says that once she's vaccinated, she's going to continue wearing her masks as well, especially at all public venues. And that's a good point. Now, are you concerned about the reopening backfiring like us having, we're going to have to reset and we're going to go in the wrong direction?
I believe we're going to go in the wrong direction. You know, and again, psychologically, when human nature, when we start to relax restrictions, you know how they say you give someone an inch and they take a mile? So, you know, I think we're going to see restrictions drop if people not doing those three Ws that Commissioner Jarrell mentioned. They're going to think, have a sense of safety now because, you know, when they're reopening, it must be safe now. And they're going to stop doing all those things that we know have kept people alive during this last year. So I am very concerned about that and what's going to happen. I think we're going to see spikes again. And it's not going to be good for people who look like us.
Well, Dr. Black, though, we are headed towards, of course, warmer weather. My goodness, it's nice out today here in the city. And we've got spring break coming up. We got Easter weekend coming up. And, you know, originally, we were told that the virus, you know, all in itself, if it's warmer weather, then it's not so bad. Obviously, not a true statement.
Not a true statement at all. You know, if not, then those, those communities with warmer environments, you know, annually, would not have COVID cases. So I think what we're going to see is again, people are going to lack, relax their safety measures. We're going to see those gatherings that we know transmit COVID. I think we just have to keep reiterating that psychologically, I know that your mental health has been challenged. I know that you have the cabin fever. I know that it has been a year with these restrictions, but these restrictions are saving lives. And for us not to take that, what's being told to us by the media, not to take that too strongly and to see what's happening around. You see the families that are still being negatively impacted by COVID-19, like the neighbor that you just talked about. It is real and it's not going away right now. If we continue to do what we're doing, we're going to eventually get there, but we are absolutely not there yet.
And you're absolutely right. I mean, it's pretty obvious. This has not just been a countrywide problem. It's global. And, you know, and there are countries that have good warm weather and they still have very high numbers. So remind people about the free testing that groundwater solutions provide. testing that Groundwater Solutions provides, and if you're out and about today.
Okay, I am, and I'm ready today. So our testing locations today are at Master Cuts at 1610 Ashley Road in Charlotte, North Carolina, and at University Adult Care at 1324 John Kirk Drive in Charlotte, North Carolina.
And that's free testing?
That is free testing. No appointment necessary.
Well, I appreciate all that you do. Again, Groundwater Solutions, if someone would like to connect with you, we can get your website back up. You've been working really hard in community. We are so grateful to have you, to have you as a partner, to come on and share. Because I've really been educated and about so many things that we're not getting from other platforms. So groundwater-solutions.org, groundwater-solutions.org, and Genesis Project One. Dr. Black, I appreciate you. Anything else you want to touch on before we-
Yeah, I want to say that we've improved our automation. So anyone who would like to register to test, you can text the word "register" to 797979. And then it will register you, and you will see where we're located for that particular day.
All right. Great, great stuff. Thank you so much for taking the time.
You're welcome.
And you guys are really chatting it up today. I appreciate that. In our chat box, Elise Stewart, thank you, girlfriend, for hopping on. She shared, and she is a fitness guru in her own sense. And she shared, you know, remind people that eating properly and exercise is also important to build up your immune system. And she's absolutely right. If you eat better, and if you get your exercise in, because one of the issues that was pointed out early on was the whole issue of obesity. And that's one of the underlying conditions. And, you know, if you work really hard at taking your health, you know, it's a full package. And going around and just considering just the vaccine is the one way that's going to be solve all, is not a good way to operate, especially if you want to live a long, healthy life. Certainly, I do. It's time for me to wrap things up. Boy, when I have great conversation, time really does fly. Dr. Black, thank you so much. Commissioner Jorrell, thank you so much. I want to give this update before I go, though. President Biden stimulus plan, looks like it's making its way, and it's going to get approved, 1.9 trillion. I mentioned that earlier. But also, the conversation about how many of those lawmakers have actually sat down with just everyday people to realize, you know, what, how they're being affected. Also, Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, K through 12, they are talking now, the younger elementary ages, I believe, K through second, they're going to attend school more often for in-person learning, starting on March 22nd. Here we go. I got ahead of myself. Elementary students will begin the classroom four days a week. Middle and high schoolers will begin in-person learning two days a week on March 15th. So we're heading back slowly but surely. Thank you to my wonderful producer. She always makes sure that I have information. I wish I could get her in studio with me to keep this light on that I've been fighting with the whole time. But anyway, it's time for me to wrap things up. I do want to make this point. On March 9th, which was yesterday, a year ago, we had only 22 deaths. This was just so profound for me. 22 deaths. And then yesterday, we had over 525,000 deaths. And if you're like me, and you lost someone, you know, it was very painful to see those numbers and to react and think, you know what? All the lives that could have been saved. There's been a report that at least 400,000 could have been saved if we had just taken some steps that we should have taken. Of course, we are learning to adjust. We're learning to cope, and we're learning to move on. It doesn't make it less painful. It just means that we, as people, continue to adjust in our daily lives. I appreciate you all hopping on. I appreciate you joining this conversation. As always, life's challenges make us better, not bitter. I hope you'll join us again on Friday. As always, I always say, together, we will cancel COVID. Thanks for tuning in. Have a great day, everyone, and get out and enjoy this wonderful weather.